I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Calhoun Parish Police Jury for Thursday, August 18, 2016. We're gonna have the invocation by Mr. Guidry and the pledge by Mr. Gilery.
Yes, sir. Please stand.
May we all bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening in the most humble and gracious way we know how, giving thanks to Father, many blessings you've bestowed upon us as your Christian people. We want to ask a special blessing, Father, for the state of Louisiana. There's a lot of devastation that's going on today, Father, with the flooding and everything, and a lot of families are being separated. We just ask that you would continue to put your loving arms around this state, this city, and this parish. Father, we ask all these many blessings in your son-named Jesus who made it all possible for us, in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andropont.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Braim.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Fornum is out of town and unable to attend this evening. Mr. Guidry.
Here, Ms. Cad.
Mr. Gilery.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Vice President McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
President Landry.
Here.
You do have a question?
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Before we get started, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. If there's any item that you wish to speak on, we ask that you fill out a blue slip which you'll find at the front of the room there, and you can turn it in to someone at the staff desk. Item four, consideration of authorizing the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owner. We'll show our public hearing on October 6, 2016, as to why the structures on the properties as stipulated should not be condemned. A, 207 Balboa Street in East Lake Charles. B, 5349 East Broad Street in East Lake Charles. C, 310 Avalon Street in East Lake Charles. D, 6436 Nicky Drive in LeBlu Settlement. E, 2852 LeFrank Drive in LeBlu Settlement. F, 3129 East Burton Street in the North Sulphur Area. G, 321 Dalton Road in Westlake. H, 1618 Unis Street in Sulphur. Had a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item five, take appropriate actions on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have one special event permit before you tonight. We recommend that it be.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. Guidry. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery, a second by Mr. Guidry. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated July 19, 2016. Got a motion by Mr. White, a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item eight.
Move on eight.
Consideration of adopting a resolution in support of the efforts of the Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District and Lake Charles Methanol LLC for construction of a petroleum coke processing facility in Calhoun Parish. Got a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item nine, take appropriate action on a request by the Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District to abandon and revoke the original dedication of a 60-foot wide unimproved right-of-way in the 7,900 block of Big Lake Road in Ward III. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. Had a motion by Mr. Braim and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 10, take appropriate action on a request by Rebecca Stout to rezone from mixed residential and light commercial to mixed residential to allow a residential development of a manufactured home at 1180 North Perkins Ferry Road in Ward 1. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. I have a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Mr. White. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 11, is this what we have our speakers on?
Yes.
Jessica?
You can ask, Chris, if they have any.
Where's Jessica with a note?
Which item? I'm sorry.
It may not be 11.
I think it's 15.
It's not. I think it's 15. We're not there yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Take appropriate action on a request by Manchester Properties LLC to rezone from light commercial to multifamily residential to allow a multifamily residential development of seven units at 1551 East Main Street in Ward III. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. Had a motion by Mr. Gilery. Is that with stipulations, Mr. Gilery?
Yeah, I had a question.
And a second by Mr. Guidry. Mr. Gilery, go ahead.
Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir.
It's just in the Cheneau area, because I looked for the place the other day, and is it one of the old warehouses that they're remodeling?
It is. It was an old commercial building right there. Mr. Gilery, and so they're renovating that for some, you know, these apartments, so.
Really, is that, I mean, it looks like it might need to come down and start from the ground, but they're gonna renovate it?
They're gonna renovate it.
Okay.
As long as they follow all of the parish codes and everything? Oh, yeah. They'll have to meet all the parish codes.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, we had a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 12, take appropriate action on a request by AMAC LLC to rezone from light industrial to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park of 42 spaces at 2468 Toomey Road in Ward 7. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. Mr. Barris. We need a motion.
That's history.
That's you?
Yes.
12.
12.
I'm looking at this here.
Take your time.
I'm sorry, I was looking ahead.
We'll move on that.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Barris, a second by Mr. McMillan. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 13, take appropriate action on a request by Carless Corner LLC to rezone from agriculture to light industrial to allow light industrial development of a storage yard at 7214 Highway 27 South in Ward 4. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted nine for and one against to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Collins. Is that to uphold, sir? With stipulations?
With stipulations.
Motion to uphold. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 14, take appropriate action on a request by Hackberry Investments LLC to rezone from agriculture to light industrial to allow light industrial development of a storage yard in the 7,100 block of Highway 27 South in Ward 4. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Barris to uphold with stipulations and a second by Mr. McMillan. Having technical difficulties. Is there any discussion?
It's on the Sulphur side. It's on the Sulphur side.
I noticed that. Motion carries. Item 15, take appropriate action on a request by Dorothy Hannah Edall to rezone from agriculture to manufactured home park. Allow a manufactured home park of 680 spaces at 750 Goodman Road in Ward 3. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted unanimously to deny the request. I have a motion by Mr. Collins to uphold and a second by Mr. Guidry. We have a number of speakers. Okay, I guess first we'll hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here on item 15, request by Dorothy Hannah?
Not here.
Okay.
Need to speak.
If they're not here, do we?
No, we don't need to.
I don't know that we need to do either. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Collins to uphold, which is to deny, and a second by Mr. Guidry. Is there any discussion? Anybody want to add anything?
No.
Seeing none, motion carries. We will have a two-minute recess. Y'all are all welcome to stay. LLC to amend ordinance number 4882 to remove stipulation number two, which required that the use be for a daycare facility only at 188 East Telephone Road in Ward 1. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the action on the request be deferred for an additional 30 days.
Move on six.
Second. Motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. White to defer for an additional 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 17, consideration of rescinding the following ordinances associated with adjudicated properties. A, ordinance number 6537. B, ordinance number 6538. C, ordinance number 6507. D, ordinance number 6503. E, ordinance number 6504. Had a motion by Mr. Scott, a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 18, consideration of adopting a resolution in support of Mr. Dennis Scott and his candidacy for third vice president on the Police Jury Association of Louisiana Executive Board. Have a motion by Ms. Trimmie, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Wait, wait, wait. Discussion?
We have discussion?
We've got to wait on Mr. Bouillot a moment to get here. So Dennis, in running for this candidacy, what are your, I guess, once you become third vice president, what are your goals? What do you see? And why is this position important for us to support you? We've got to kill a little time, a minute.
Sure you want me to start talking?
Yeah.
You know, I've just been honored to represent the state of Louisiana, Calhoun Parish, on many coastal issues. And going through that process, working with especially our 20 coastal parishes, I've been able to interact with the Police Jury Association on several issues, whether it was the budget at the state or just working towards NACO issues. So whatever our state can do to be effective in this country, you know, we are an energy coast, and we have a lot of challenges that we're facing. So I just like to be part of what I call engaging the future. You know, I don't want to just stay stagnant and just continue to go about business as normal. I like to challenge myself, and by doing that, I accept other challenges in the state as well as our country and see what I can do to do my part.
So you're winning to, running to win this, right?
So much winning, I mean, we're gonna get tired of winning.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be our third vice president. It's statewide vote by the association.
It is a statewide vote for the entire 66 parishes.
How about 64?
How about 64? Almost said 63. I'm trying to rock the boat, you know? If I can get 66.
Can I ask a question? It has nothing to do with that, but can we skip 19 and do 20 and finish this until the gentleman gets here?
That's what we're gonna do.
Thank you very much. I move on 20.
Thank you for running, and we'll have you. Thank you, Ms. Trimmie.
We'll be there to support you.
Okay, I guess that was all on that one. We're gonna come back to 19. Item 20, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a professional engineering services agreement between the police jury and the Stat Consulting Group for Engineering and Design Services for the Water System Improvements and Expansion Project Phase 1. Had a motion by Ms. Trimmie, a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 21, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the Kansas City Railroad for the construction of a waterline extension approximately 528 feet along Evergreen Drive in beautiful Westlake. Motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Anything you want to talk about, Mr. McMillan, since you want to kill more time?
Well, this is.
Has it rained in Westlake?
Well, let's just go right here.
Let's get done with this one. We had a motion and a second.
This is under discussion on this one.
Okay, go ahead.
Kansas City Railroad, as y'all know, is expanding their rail yard for the SASSAL project. And on Old Spanish Trail right there by the Recreation Center in Westlake, they're gonna be building an overpass right there as a part of this. So in conjunction with the waterline moving, the rail yard getting bigger, we are gonna have an overpass. I know it's not the one we want on Sampson Street, but it will be one over Old Spanish Trail, which I think will give the people an open evacuation route if we ever have any problems that we need to evacuate to the west. So it's gonna be a win-win with this rail yard, waterline, and the new overpass coming. So that's coming up in the future. If you go out, if you happen to ride by there, you'll see they're already working on it pretty heavily. They're getting out of the ground, they've got the civil infrastructure going, and it will be, Tim, do you have a timeline when it's gonna be built? If you don't mind me asking?
It's about a year project, but just to remind you, that is what KCS is paying for that.
Yes. That's another thing, too, because we have a hard time. People are saying, hey, why can't we get one at Sampson Street? And the funding for that is in with the I-10 project, which would be federal funding. This overpass here is being totally paid for by KCS. So that's a really good thing on that behalf. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. President. How, to save money, could y'all just take the big Westlake sign and just kind of make a curve and like, that could be the overpass? I think, I mean, it's big enough.
It's big enough.
Somebody call him again so his phone will go off.
You know, the guy has a radio show, because he could talk up here for an hour.
Yeah. We're waiting on Mr. Bouillot.
He's on the radio?
You're good at it.
I've never heard.
Okay, well, I think we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 22, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for bids for the following. A, Calhoun Emergency Response Training Center Safe Room Project. B, Calhoun Emergency Response Training Center Fire Training Tower Project. Had a motion by Mr. Collins, a second by Mr. Guidry. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 23, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Eddie Petrie.
So move.
Mr. Gilery, got a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Guidry. Mr. Gilery.
Yes, I think we all knew Mr. Petrie, he was always on the corner of Highway 14, Case Corner, and he always unclothed. And he was one of the first black rice farmers in Lake Charles. And he was a great guy. He always had some overpriced watermelons, but.
Always.
I think everybody bought because he always.
Bought them anyway.
Everybody bought them, and he knew he was high, but he said, they gonna buy them. They gonna buy them. He said, I'm old, they gonna buy them. So, but anyway, I just want to recognize Mr. Petrie was a great guy, great man for the city and everything. So I know we all remember him.
Well, I got a question for you. Did you ever get a bad one? I'm pretty sure the answer's no. There you go.
No. He would tell you, bring it back the next day, and you know, you'd say, well, it's bad, now let's buy a new one.
Yeah. That's only, that's only man I buy watermelon from.
Tony's right.
I'd let him pick them for me. He'd always, he'd pick you a good one.
Yes.
Good guy.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 24, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late John Vaughn, past member of the police jury and also past president of the Louisiana Police Jury Association. I have a painting on the wall. Mr. Andropont.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Got a motion by Mr. Andropont, a second by Mr. McMillan. Go ahead, Mr. Andropont.
I didn't have the pleasure of serving with John when he was over here, but I knew him real well, I knew him for a lot of years. The one thing that I remember mostly about John, one, if you didn't want the truth, don't ask him the question, because he wasn't gonna tell you what you wanted to hear, he's gonna tell you exactly how it was. Unfortunately, when he was involved in this accident that almost took his life, that ended his career as a public servant of the district that he represented. But he recovered, was not quite the same. He had walked with a limp the last, until he passed away. John was a friend of mine and was a friend to a lot of different people, and after he, we didn't quite associate as much as we did before his accident, and he later recovered well enough to move on with his life. And he's to be commended for that, to have the courage to move forward, you know? So with that, are you, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Andropont. Mr. McMillan?
Yep. My first introduction to Johnny Vaughn was in 1973, back when I had a lot of hair and was somewhat thinking I was a baseball player. He was a tremendous official. He umpired games, and he was the best of the best. Johnny Vaughn, when he was on there, you knew you were gonna get a straight ball or strike call. And of course, for some reason, he nicknamed me Hot Dog. I don't know where he got that from, but that was one of my many nicknames. But I could be in a crowd of 40, 50 people, and I hear somebody calling Hot Dog, and I knew it was Johnny Vaughn looking for me. Well, I always had a great relationship with him. He mentored as a police jury, he was very supportive of us up here and me running personally. So Johnny Vaughn was a fine man and a really good man for Calhoun Parish and him serving the parish. So thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Trimmie.
I guess, just for information, I mean, John was a really, really good guy. And he was actually serving as president of the Police Jury Association and on his way back to Calhoun from some meetings in Baton Rouge when the terrible accident happened. So it was coming back, because we had, it was on, that's right, Kathy reminded me, it was on a police jury meeting night, and he was coming back to his meeting, and that's when the accident took place. And it really tore all of us up. I mean, and we loved John, and he did come back to the point where he still enjoyed life, he enjoyed people. And so I think, even though he couldn't come back here, I think he did have a good final days in his, from all these years. And he always had something good to say about you or anybody. He always had something good to say about somebody. That's what I, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie.
We'll miss you, John.
Is there any, any further discussion? Okay, I had a motion by Mr. Andropont and a second by Hot Dog.
Thank you very much.
There's no further discussion. Motion passed, carries. Item 25, we're gonna go ahead, consideration of going into executive session to discuss James Livingston versus the CPPJ.
Mr. Boryark asked if y'all go ahead and get to that item, if you want to do 19, to just go ahead. If he gets here after executive session, I'm sure he'll want to say hi to y'all, but we can go ahead, y'all can take action if you'd like on 19.
We waited this long. I mean, I hate to do.
That's up to y'all. I just, he'd be fine with that.
He could wait on us a few minutes. We've waited on him.
Sure. Just wanted to throw that out, it's up to you.
How long do you expect this to be? And I know it's hard to tell, but.
Not that long. 10 minutes, maybe.
We'll come, we'll come back to 19. Go ahead, Mr. Gilery.
I was just gonna take a point of personal, I don't know if Mr. Tom can put it up, just show that the, this program is a.
It's a popper.
This is a great program that we have as the Calhoun Parish Police Jury for low-income houses that have the kids that go on to pass high school and going on to better their education. And this is a picture that we all took, and Kevin is the president of that. Kevin, you want to say something on that? I just want to say that's a great program. Next year, hopefully, we're looking to get maybe 10 students in part of that program.
And like Mr. Gilery said, one of our former employees, Mr. McDonald James, who's one of the guys that was instrumental in putting a lot of this together and has just been a great asset to us. And Mr. Felique has done a great job of going throughout Calhoun Parish, finding kids that have been in the system with us through either Section 8 or other options that we've had that we've offered them. And I just think that. Tariq, I can't say enough about what Tariq has done to make this program work the way that it has. And Tariq, if you wouldn't mind, would you mind coming up and maybe just saying a few words? Because I think it's a program that a lot of people here in Calhoun Parish need to know about, because it's helping kids that don't always have the means to better their education. And I would hate to see a young person not be able to better their education because of financial reasons. Mr. Felique.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry and Mr. Gilery, and also to Ms. Mayo, who's also on our Human Service Advisory Board. We also want to acknowledge Ms. Trimmie, who served for many, many years on the Human Service Advisory Board for her work. We also want to thank Mr. Collins, who was also present on that particular day when the scholarships were being presented. Really don't have much to add, other to say, we want to just thank our police jury members who serve on the Human Service Advisory Board for your leadership. Certainly, you're giving me a lot of credit, but the truth of the matter is, is that it really belongs to you guys, the leadership that you guys provide to our Human Services Advisory Board. And so we just want to thank you for the continued support that you've given us over the years so that we can put together programs like this to help the citizens of Calhoun Parish.
Thank you, Mr. Felique.
I just want to say also that, for some reason, that made it to Washington, DC.
Yeah, I'm not sure who had anything to do with that, but whoever it was.
If it had been that it stood up here with us, maybe it helped with that. We do appreciate that, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Felique. Okay, we're now in the executive session. Back in session, I need a motion. Got a motion by Mr. Scott to receive report, and a second by Mr. Braim. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll go back to item 19, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an intergovernmental services agreement between the Calhoun Parish Police Jury and the Cameron Parish Police Jury wherein Calhoun agrees to provide for the temporary staging of operations for Cameron in the event of a natural or man-made disaster. Mr. Bouillot here. Got a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Barris. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Ryan Boryak, Cameron Parish Administrator. First of all, I apologize, honestly, I'm never late for anything. And so we had a, we had a little company there working on a pilot agreement, and we didn't want to let them out the room until we got the number we wanted, kind of like Mr. McMillan does at them live auctions sometimes. We went from that, and we have an Oyster Task Force meeting going on, so, but I do apologize. Look, this is a great, a great day for us, and on behalf of the jurors and our residents, this is something that we feel very deeply about. Mr. Grimaud and Dan Laverne, our OP Director, when they first visited on this issue, it's something that we absolutely wanted to pursue, and we are very thankful that Dane and Brian and everyone else, the facility managers that came out and visited with us. This is very exciting for us. It's a shame that it took us this long. We thank you for being open-minded and patient with us. And I got to say, look, in recent times, and Mr. Scott can attest to this also, I really enjoy the cooperation that we have from Cameron Parish with the Calhoun Parish Police Jury. It means a lot to us. We do some crazy things from time to time. I'm glad y'all put, you know, man-made or man-caused issues, because we can screw some things up down home. So I'm glad that y'all expanded that verbiage in the motion a little bit. That's gonna come in handy. That might backfire a little bit. But again, I don't want to, you know, being the, being the first speaker after you come out of executive session is kind of like talking right before lunch, nobody really wants to hear whatever you got to say. So I appreciate your consideration of this motion, and on behalf of our jurors and residents, we certainly think you look forward to continuing a great working relationship.
Thank you, Ryan. We appreciate you driving all the way.
Do it despite Darryl.
All the way up here. We have any questions? Any discussion? Okay, we had a motion, a second. Hearing none, motion carries, and have a motion adjourned. We're done.